Let's go ahead and call the meetings. I'll order here. We have, I'd like to introduce the new guests that we have in the audience. If you don't mind, stand it up and share.
You're welcome.
You're fine right there.
Hi, my name's Rebecca. I'm with the Daily Times. Specifically, I'm covering judicial matters, so I'm in the court a lot or running around at the Hebrew School or the Justice Center. But Mariah does a good job with the China Good Book Press, splitting her responsibilities up, and I am currently doing the library. So I'm really excited to be doing that. It's definitely a nice change of pace from what I'm typically writing about. It's kind of nice to be back in the library a little bit more often, since this is where I spent a lot of time. I was studying project around. So very nice to meet everybody, and if there's anything I can do to help out or to help bring awareness to any events coming up, just let me know.
Thank you. Welcome. And we always appreciate the coverage that you guys provide. And Mariah looks wonderful today. Yeah, we will miss her. Please let her know.
She loves to laugh without talent.
Looks like we don't have any public comments. Anyone sign up for anyone on the board? Okay, so we'll move right into my report here. First order of business is I'd love to introduce our newest member, Richard Todd. Welcome, Richard. And Richard was voted on last week by the Board of Commissioners and will serve in term with us. And you are, are you a county representative? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so welcome, Richard. We look forward to getting to know you. We're going to get, we're baptizing him right now for the board meeting next week. I asked him if he was going to come to the trustee training tomorrow, but unfortunately, it's a conflict. And so we are going to spend some time, Richard, we have time outside. This is for committee, the planning, and we hope to get to know you better, but welcome.
Thank you very much. Side of the beer.
Next thing is I really want to thank the Friends of the Library for David and Julie. Really enjoyed his visit, his perspective, his background. It's fascinating. I'm sad that you weren't here at it, but it was, I think, a great experience. And Manny will talk about it, but just thank you for supporting. Tomorrow's the trustee workshop. Hey, Liz, we're all going to see you tomorrow. Who's going? Can you raise your hand and let us know? I, I'm going. Any other trustees? Okay, and Manny?
I, I think I'm going to, because I was out last week and I'm backed up.
Okay. Anyone else from the staff?
I don't think so.
Oh, well, Liz, I better eat lunch next to you, you know. I don't know anyone else is going to be there, but I look forward.
Have a good time.
Okay, good. And Liz, I have to leave a little bit early, so just wanted to let you know that right now. So we have some trustees that are going to go through their trustee training and just let you guys know that that is an annual workshop. That's a wonderful opportunity, so think about it in the future and being connected with that here, other than libraries. Some exciting stuff that we're also working with on the Friends of the Library is Manny is getting, we're working through how to get cards and students can work. And I just really want to commend Manny and staff and the Friends of the Library, this is the gem. Just thinking creatively of how we can leave site, go into the schools with the librarians and such, and get kids signed up for cards. Also, at the commission meeting, the commissioners approved the book drop, which we'll discuss more, but just want to thank the commissioners for that. I know we're all really excited about that. And pre-construction will be this week. Yep, so moving right on. That's all from our report. Now I'll pass it over to Manny.
Thank you, Lauren. First, I want to thank Beth. Beth is our super sub for Summer. I will say that Summer's doing great. She is healing well, and she misses everybody, and she looks forward to be back soon. So we miss her, but thank you, Beth, for being our super sub. Get well, Summer. So I'm going to begin at Youth Services.
I guess we probably need to approve.
We just thought that should.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just.
Last few minutes.
Yeah, let's take a look at the minutes. All right, we skipped right over that. Everyone, you had a copy of the minutes in your packet for the August meeting. So were there any corrections or anything we needed to add? Okay, so hearing none, let's move to the motion.
Make a motion, make the minutes be approved.
In a second. All in favor? The minutes are for, thank you, Sean.
Sean and I both said, thought that looked like a big.
Okay, Manny, back to you.
Youth Services, right now, August was a, as they call it, the housekeeping month, which is basically catch their breath when the big storm known as Summer Reading Program has, has completed. But they're gearing up for some great new programs, and they're listed here in the report, which includes in the month of October, a family pumpkin carving contest. They'll also be involved in our annual spectacular downtown Merrillville. Always look forward to that on a Friday. And then the Fall Festival. Fall Festival is going to be coming up on October the 98th. There's going to be music, food, crafts, rock climbing, everything. So hopefully, the weather holds out and look, oh, and also apparently Stormtrooper is going to be there as well. So looking forward to that. They do a great job with the Fall Festival. Seems like it gets bigger and bigger each and every year. So hopefully, the weather holds out for that. Over in reference, I do want to recognize this, and it was in the newspaper, that the library received 23 yearbooks from Friendsville Academy from the 1940s to 1970. So that's pretty cool there. Our Southern Appalachian series, we had a recent one on music traditions, which our very own Anna obtained, otherwise known as Appalachian Anna. She was the MC for it. It was a great turnout. The next one will be in November with Dr. Andrew Deneau of Merrillville College. I don't know if I'm saying that correctly, Deneau? Focus on Seniors, another popular program. Our next event is October 16th, Medicare Open Enrollment. Be very exciting for that. Get an excellent turnout. And then we also had a Foot Hill Storytelling Festival a couple of weeks ago. And what was great about that was Sarah, our new reference manager, along with Fay, who is a professional storyteller. They went into the schools, which was great as well. And then we had the bourbon in the evening. Normally, we have it on a Saturday, but we gave it a shot on a Thursday evening, and it was well attended. I think we're going to stick with that. Some upcoming programs. Let's start with 24 Tales, Appalachian Ghost Stories, Legends, and Mysteries. That'll be coming up on the 26th. We have a lot of interest on social media for that. That should be a lot of fun. Our very own Sherry McCarter, who is our writer-in-resident, she participated in the book, and she will be there. And then on Saturday evening, if you are interested, we have a Taylor Swift Silent Disco Party. So that should be very, it's very unique. I don't think this has ever been done in a public library. This may be the first, it may be the last, it may be a hit. I don't know, but we're looking forward to it. Chelsea will have the cabale open. And if you're in the mood to cut it loose for a couple of hours, six to eight, there'll be three dancing channels.
Manny, I think, isn't there a limit on the number of headsets?
We do. We have 200 headsets for that.
So don't laugh that much.
Yes, but it's all ages. I'll look forward to it. I will be here watching everyone sing and dance. Over in collections, so this is something that is really cool, that Hoopla, one of our services that we provide to the public. They have a new service called Flex. And this is for the hot books, you would say, or the bestsellers that are out there. If a new James Patterson puts out his book every month, that'll be part of a Flex package, or Stephen King, or a hot nonfiction topic. So we had just started that the end of August, and it's something new that we'll offer, and we'll see, we'll see how it goes.
Manny, do you want to talk about things?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna just skip to hospitalities quickly. Something that, no, that's okay. Chelsea really wanted to point out, with the Hot Summer Nights Concert Series, which was a rounding success, there was a 15 increase in sales, which was great. Patron services are rocking along. They had close to 500 new library cards for the month. And Hot Summer Nights was a big hit. And David Benjamin Murray, like Lauren said before, he did a lot in less than 24 hours. So thank you, friends, for allowing this to happen, because if it wasn't for you, you wouldn't be here. So we're really looking forward to his, his results, which should arrive late October, early November. And the report says that the master plan should be completed by January 2026. After further consultation, we're confident that we can have it complete by the spring of 2025. So they'll, so about six months from when the report is, is sent to us. We look forward to his findings. Met with Foot Hill Community Development, I know there's a change in leadership there since the meeting. For down the line, a potential of a tool library. This is in the beginning stages. And once new leadership in Foot Hill's community development happens, we'll revisit again with something down the line that we're looking at doing.
Manny, can I ask a quick question going to that? I'm on that board. Can you, can you tell me exactly, just a little bit background? I think we want the whole idea, what this encompasses.
So there are public libraries, and my previous library did a tool lending library for patrons that needed. We had a power washer, power washer machine. We had tools, items that patrons can borrow and utilize, kind of like our hotspots, and then return them. So the Asheville Library in North Carolina has a tool library. There is a library in Tennessee that does have a tool lending library. We do the cake pans here, so it's kind of similar to the cake pans. Bobby was just starting out the first, you know, the process and wanted to see if Sarah, adult services, would be interested, and wanted to know more information about it, and so.
So when you say tools, you literally mean tools?
Yeah, pan hammer.
Okay.
Yeah, stud finder, things like that, yeah.
Okay, all right.
The Friends will give you a book on the way out about how to use it.
How to use the tools, that's true. And then finally, on my part, and then Angenea will speak on the PR and the financial side. As Lauren said, the commissioners, thank you for that, unanimously approved the book return project, the construction portion. And we're going to have our first, we're going to have our pre-construction meeting this Thursday at 2:00 with everyone involved. And we look forward to getting this, getting this going. It's been a long time coming, so looking forward to it.
All right, what is it? So this month with PR, we had some things we wanted to share. And this is page 13 of the report. Basically, we've been getting some five-star reviews, and we wanted you guys to see that we've been getting some love and what exactly they've been saying. So we included two in that. Also, I wanted to let you know that in August, we launched, we did a soft launch of the BCPL Niche Academy or the BCPL Academy. And what that is, is it is a database, if you will, that allows us to create video and slide content for us to use and shape in any way we want. The first round of this, or the soft launch of it, is basically we have put in, embedded into our website, how-to videos on how to use some of our resources. And we have had that, that little blue box that says 111 views is how many people in the first month. And it's not even a full month when this was, report was ran. We're looking at those how-to. So it means that we identified a need, and with this new database, we have been able to meet it on how to use some of our resources. So just wanted to show that. You will see other uses of Niche Academy over the next few months while Summer is away. When she's got the energy, she is creating some wonderful book chats. And with that, so with Niche Academy, what you can do is we're going to have a book chat. So it's about a two, three-minute video about a book. And then we're going to do like a list of read-alikes. And then there's going to be, so Summer's an amazing artist. So in her first one, she is like, well, let's make a bookmark. And she shows you how to make a sparkly bookmark. And then the next one, you know, there, this book has something to do with a tree. And so she paints a tree, but she Bob Rosses it in such a beautiful way. It is just so much fun. We also, through our partnership with Merrillville College, have a Bonner scholar who is going to help us also do book chats. So as they volunteer their time, they have submitted a list of 12 items. And at least once a month, they're going to be working on building this content library. And it'll be, once we have it up and enough to make it sustainable and paced well, we're going to be opening it up to the community. Other libraries have used this, this, I'm going to refer to it as a database or this platform, as a way to also enhance their passive programs. So you might start to see some of the things that we have on our YouTube channel also show up on here. And it's just another way where that program content can be revisited. So we're excited about it.
When you, when you get to the point where you are wanting public people to do book talks?
You're hired.
No, not me.
Because the board would be great.
I could do, I could do, son, but I'm just, we have a TA at our school who goes into the language arts classrooms, and she does book chats with the kids at school. And she's simply amazing. And I bet we could.
Please give her my email.
Yeah, I will. I bet we could get her to do some young adult books.
I'm happy to say that this is what the, the Bonner scholar has actually focused on. But the more, the merrier. So we would, we would love it, and I would like to invite and encourage all of you. If you get a wild, you don't have to come up with the craft. He can do that, or you can. We're not going to get in your way. Let your reading magic sparkle shine to share it with us.
Thanks, Angenea. This is, I think, very innovative. I love the video. I sent it to the next video you might talk about. And my question is the reviews. Have you seen that or not?
Okay, so, so here's the thing. That's a different thing. BCPL Academy is one thing, and that's one graphic. What you're looking at is the TikTok post. And that is the, the birth child of Beth Hall right next to you. And what is it? That has been, so the board packet is shared with staff. And when we do do a board, when we do do a TikTok, usually because it's so publicly made. So when you watch the video, Savannah's on a cart, and she's, you know, in the middle of the main gallery doing donuts. So usually, the staff notice it. So yes, staff are.
No, mostly the reviews.
Yes, yes.
I've heard the news where the government may ban TikTok.
So what is it? We have not heard, and I can tell you that we put no secrets on TikTok.
It's a Chinese platform.
It is a Chinese platform.
Geopolitical environment that may go away. So I don't know if that would preclude the plans if all of a sudden it disappears.
So, so here's the thing. We, we do pay attention to that. For, so for instance, when Twitter became X and the environment of that platform changed, we decided that we would back off. We still have a channel there, but it redirects them to our Facebook and our TikTok. If it's dissolved or is affected by, then we will, we will, of course, adapt. But at this stage, we're just enjoying the platform. The main thing, the reason, our motivation for TikTok is because it helps us reach an age group that we were not able to reach in any other way.
Oh, are there, it's just, some things are beyond our control.
That is exactly right. And so if it goes away, we're well within it.
And all those kids will go find something, somebody else to be too.
Yes, and, and it's the hard thing is like, because we're not going to get on Snapchat.
Okay, let's, let's move on to the financial report, too. Keep this new. We have a lot of stuff to cover.
All right, so the library is tracking well, as you can tell, where we're supposed to be. We're supposed to be just around 17%. And all our expenditure percentages are well and truly below that. As for our revenues, what is it? We're, again, supposed to be around the 17, but we're at the 23. And you'll always see that over, that inflation, because when we get this stakeholders' payments, it really bumps everything up. The main thing to note is that you will see an increase in our revenue lines again. Now that commission has approved the foundation funding. And what is it? Manny will be right, reaching out to the foundation to request that check. Once that hits it, you'll notice an increase in the revenue lines only. We will not be adjusting the, the total budget. Any questions on that? Okay, well, then the only other thing is I want to once again reiterate is when you get these reports, if you have questions, if you will send them to the BCPL director email address. That way that we have time to thoughtfully consider what the question is and make sure we have the answer by the next board meeting. And thank you.
Angenea, thanks for always doing a great job with the finances. We're in really good shape with you guys. Thank you. Okay, the next report, we were, Bill Kogis with the foundation is, is not going to join us this evening due to traveling schedule, and I don't have an update from the workshop. So we'll move on to Vandy. Would you like to give us an update on the Friends?
Glad to be with you. The only thing I have to report is just success of our book sale efforts in the weekend of September 5th through 7th, the same week that David Benjamin Murray was here. Got to see us live in person. We had the largest, most successful book sale we've ever had, which was kind of nice coinciding with our 50th anniversary celebration this fall. But we sold 10,000 books, we had 1,000 transactions, and we grossed $90,000 in that one weekend. So, and of course, that's all separate to our eBay. And eBay right now is slightly ahead of, of where it was at the same time last fiscal year. So we're doing great there. Our next book sale is the first weekend in December, for all of you that need to do Christmas shopping. I hope you're all planning on attending our 50th anniversary celebration. That is on Friday, October 25th at Pellisippe State. The tickets are $50 a person. And the foundation is selling tables, but you can also go to our website and purchase tickets. I think it's going to be just a lovely, lovely event, heavy orders and a cash bar. And we are getting ready. As soon as our celebration is over, we're embarking on a strategic planning process. We have not updated our Friends strategic plans since, I think, 2019. So we're ready to start that process, and I hope to have somebody who will be assisting us with that. And a lot is happening around this, this establishment right now. And we will make, make sure that we're future forward in thinking about how we can best support it.
Congrats on that salad. I mean, you guys run a wonderful operation down here.
It is amazing.
So please give everyone our thanks. If you do not have tickets to the celebration, I believe it's our table.
There's still one. I think there's a couple of seats for our table.
There's, I think there's four tables left. But I don't know how many seats are in the, the second table.
Yeah.
Me and you.
And yeah.
So. Okay, so there was an email sent out from Dee. I know Stephanie and I are on, it's all, we can make sure that Dawn gets that, because it was a week to pay off. And there was, there was some information put that you're with the trustee. I don't know who sent that. Was that Dee?
Summer.
Summer, okay.
I think it was Summer, yeah.
And then, Richard, if you would like to join as well, or any other trustee that ended up participating, to think about it. It's, the Friends are huge supporters of the library. As you can hear, they're very successful, and so we're celebrating their 50 years.
Well, what I failed to mention, we are, we're starting an initiative to really grow our membership. Richard, we do, we do book sales, and we do, we develop a membership cohort to support. And right now, it's sitting at 700, so I'm hoping strategically we can really grow that number over, over the coming, coming days. But yes, we'd be glad to tell you all about us.
Thank you.
We'll get that, actually, we'll get that set up. Maybe that would be a great introduction. Okay, hey, Liz, are you ready to give your report?
I am. I'm coming to you live from one of our public libraries. And so I hope you can't hear anyone in the next room.
I can turn the volume up a little bit.
On my end?
I think it's our end.
Okay, okay. Hey, is that better? Great, okay. Well, it's good to be with you all. I'm, I'm coming to you from one of our public libraries. Sorry, I had a, I had a previous board meeting, and I couldn't be both places. But technology, the wonders of technology allows me to do that. So I, we really just, trustee workshop is our big news, of course, coming up tomorrow with Art Circle Public Library. Lauren, I'll look forward to having you with us. We also are helping our member libraries complete their public library survey this month. So that's a huge endeavor for them, and we're hoping them finalize those by the end of this month. We also have several, we've kicked off our training plan for this fiscal year. And so we have several exciting trainings coming up that we offer our library directors as well as trustees if they're interested. So we look forward to working with everybody, and it's a busy time of year. And it sounds like you all have got a lot going on, too, just, you know. So that's mainly what we have. Summer Reading Conference is coming up in October. That will also be held at the Art Circle Public Library in Crossville. And so that's mainly all I have.
Thank you, Liz. So we, there has been some questions from the new trustees. Can we get a hyperlink for them emailed, either to, you know, we can distribute it, but for us to send that to them to begin their training?
Yes, absolutely. So I usually get the contact information for new library, for new board members from Summer or someone at the library. They'll send me that updated, so we can update our board list on our end. And then I would be happy to register them for the trustee certification online modules. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, that is, yeah. It's for Richard. He, and this is, he just has been nominated, so it's not a lag. But he was proactive already of wanting to look at training, so.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
I've already received one.
Yeah, okay.
And I know that, well, I also was working with Summer to put together sort of a local trustee orientation. I know Summer and Manny and. to, uh, put together sort of a local trustee orientation. I know, um, Summer, Summer and Manny and everybody does that and they'll have me come or participate to talk about the state side of things, the regional side of things. So I'm happy to do that as well.
Yeah, I think we'll be reaching out because we have Baca, Richard, and Dexter all that need to receive that.
Yes, that's right. Yeah, we, I think we were waiting for all the stars to align and everybody to be.
I did some training since I came in and, in midst of COVID.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Sure. I'm happy to do that. So, um, I'll get, I'll get Richard's, um, contact information. And I will go ahead. When I get that, I'll register him for the trustee certification program modules.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I don't think that we have any committee updates unless you guys have anything to share. And so I shared last time I was reviewing the minutes, but this is mostly going to transition to our long range strategic planning. And so, um, probably can. All right, let's move on to whole business. And let's, um, take a look at the emergency and safety plan. This is a plan that was presented the last meeting and we made some edits. Um, and we will be taking a vote on this. So, um, if we can get a motion for the, um, emergency and safety plan.
So moved.
Okay. Now let's open it up for discussion. Um, is there anything that you guys noticed that needs per? I had the title and, um, it's still listed as disaster plan. And then throughout the entire document, it says the disaster plan, copies of the BCPL disaster plan. So probably a fine different place all, um, kind of thing. And then there are also, let's see, this is. There's, there's some spacing still that I would look into, like on moving to the next line, like headers that aren't with the bodies, particularly like, um, on page eight, earthquake is alone, should be taken to the next page.
Also, there's some struts rooms.
Yeah. Check out spacing on page nineteen. And yeah, I thought there was maybe three, three, right there. Anyone else have anything? Each seven, is that how it always?
Yeah, and there's a strut room.
There's, on page eleven, there's a strike through.
Yeah. So do you guys, so this is, you know, this is for formatting, grammatical, easy stuff. Um, Brian, I saw, do you guys feel comfortable with the corrections that we stated on, on continuing this vote?
Yes.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So the, um, emergency and safety plan and with the correction. Okay, let's, um, next order of, uh, business is, um, the discussion of going fine free during the book return project. This is something that we brought up last month in the meeting. Um, Richard, to catch you up and anyone that missed it, we, we're have a construction proj- project that you probably heard about in the commission meeting for a new book drop that I encourage you to take a look at when you leave and, and you may have used before returning your books. It just was, um, you know, hard to maneuver and creating a lot of technology and ease to it. Um, for our staff and patrons. And so there is a construction project that is, um, slated to be three months long. And so staff has done research of, um, going fine free two weeks prior. To give the general public an update, a heads up that construction is about to take place. Then during construction for the three months and then the final after, two months after, construction concludes. Then fines will resume. And so we do need a vote on that. And so if anyone would like to make a motion?
So moved.
You second?
I'll say it.
Okay, second. And then, so is there any discussion on going fine free for the book drops? For two weeks prior, three months and two weeks. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. I think that's going to be great for the community and staff. All right, moving on to new business, we have this social media policy in front of you guys. Um, and so this is, um, our first look at it. We will not be voting on it. And I'm going to say a few things about it and then I might turn it over to, you know, Janaya, probably Janaya to talk about it. So this is, this is a combin- we're combining our internal policy and our external policy. And then we are removing the social media crisis, um, plan from it. Is that correct? And so I'll turn it over to you, Janaya, to really kind of share, uh, you know, how this came about and what we're going to be kind of.
So, um, what is it? So we had what you see before you, we had an internal plan, an external plan and a crisis plan. And first off, the crisis plan was never meant to be part of policy. Because that is our procedure on how we respond to a communications crisis. So we want to remove that from policy so that we can adapt it in a timely manner and not wait for having to bring it to the board and, and go through that process because policy is one thing, procedure is another. This is procedure. So we would like to just pull this out of the policy. Uh, and that's the, we will be changing the name, removing social media and making it a communications process plan. Because that is what we use in all instances, um, when there's a communication conflict that we need to de-escalate and, and get the right people connected to, to move forward. Um, with the internal and external, it was just too long. It was too wordy and it was like, I have to admit, when I was reviewing it for the process, I got confused on who was the external party and then the internal party. So I was like, okay, well, if I'm the one who's getting confused and I helped write the first iterations of these two, let's, let's simplify it. So it is, um, going off of, so guys, I don't reinvent the wheel. I find other libraries that I'm impressed at the way that they handle things. So we pulled, um, policies from other libraries and then we took them and we made them blunt county. We ran into our blunt county filter to make them unique and fit our community. And that's what you have before you. Um, the hard part about it is with the strike through and all that, I'm not exactly sure. Thank you. Um, what I'm wanting you to, to see.
And when you say, when you say it's right, we're talking about pages six to ten.
Yes, so those were the, that was the original. And basically what I did was everything that isn't strike through but is colored, if you've got a colored print, is what I would like the new policy to be. And you will see that the terminology, like we, we define things. We identify, uh, who the audience is more clearly. And, um, I believe this is a very, this is a policy that anyone can read and actually understand what we're trying to say. Whereas the other one was just a little too much.
So I do want to point out one thing I asked. This blunt county public library communication crisis plan, that's, that was, that's all at your table. This was not in your board packet and though, but I asked staff to print it out because it's referenced a lot and what we're going to be voting on. Um, but it's very important to know that we are voting on the policy. We are not voting on the procedure. This is this that was at your seat is so they can be flexible and then quick to react if they need to change things without bringing us to a board vote. But I thought it was important for you guys to keep it referenced that whole time. Um, and so I just wanted to, to share that for sure. We're voting on, um, the digital platforms. And Janaya, do you have anything else that, anything else that you want to share about it?
Um, no, no, I think, I don't believe the, that between, um, what is in here and what was in the internal and the external, I don't believe anything of, um, substance was really removed. Um, this time it is very clear when we're talking about the role and the responsibility and the expectation of the employee versus the role, the responsibility and the expectation by under public use. So, um, I, I think that the, this, the segmenting here will be a lot clearer, but I don't believe we've truly removed any of the content.
Nice, good question.
Yes, sir.
Pages one through on the, oh, see, I may be talking, thinking like two different things. Pages one through six. Is this, is an addition to this or we talking about two separate?
So what is it? Pages one through six that don't have any line through is what I'm presenting to, um, to, to replace both the internal and the external policies. Does that make?
Okay, yes.
And then.
So much of a change. I didn't know how to do it nicely.
I mean, you're fine. If, I was just looking at the toolkit. I made a mark. It was here. There's. Yeah, coming out.
Yeah. So we, you know, we are not, we're not voting on, on the, we're voting on, our, our job is the board's vote on policy. Um, so staff can be number one speaker. And so I do have a question. I, this may just be me, but I cannot read the strike through during law to compare. So if I can get a copy without the strike through so I can compare, I was very, I could read your new language, but I just want to make sure we're not losing anything.
Absolutely. So what is it? If, if everyone feels that way, then we can, um, go on to, uh, what is it? So our policies, once they're approved, are always on our website, under our policy. But I will send you links to the bcpl dot board email. Um, and I'll make sure that either you're part of that email or something, but we'll get you the originals so that you can. And if you would like print offs, just reply back saying, print it off for us and we'll get those ready and leave them at the front.
So, uh, thank you. I think that'll be great. Maybe it's my, maybe it's Nick's.
Pink is more, you know, it's more.
But, um, as you guys looked over, was there anything that you saw you guys would like to have passed on to staff for, for screening?
Just this, just ticky tag, but at the bottom of page one, I don't think that there needs to be, I think there needs to be something else beside the comma after, after limited to.
What do you think?
We're, I, I don't know. This is one of those where not, not having been an English major, I'm not sure if a, uh, if a, um, semi-colon or a colon might be better.
I think it's dot, dot colon.
Uh, probably, probably.
Are you looking at that?
Because the English major in this place first has asked her.
So, so I can run it back through. So Zoe on our PR team, she is like an English, is she an English speaker? Yeah.
They don't need so.
But is, but is not limited to no comma? I came from, I came from, uh, you know, the eighties, so comma, 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 comma. I don't know if you guys remember that one?
This policy is, is very important, um, right now. And this, and then I would say, um, and this, uh, and how we communicate with each other, our community, our community uses social media, um, and online. So I really want you guys to take time to look at what Janaya's proposing and what we used to have because it's helped protect, it really helps protect staff and our board on what, how we handle, um, social media. So let's, let's put some good thought into this. Um, and if you have any suggestions or want to have dialogue with Janaya, please share. We'll vote on this in the next board meeting unless, unless there's too much, but I, I would like for us to get that in place soon. It would be great before some wonderful November stuff happens.
I, I do, if I can say, the one thing I did want to, um, and I kind of changed tax on this one. In this policy, I want it to be very clear who has permission to do what, when they're putting out a message for our library. So for the first time, you will actually see job positions mentioned. And that is why typically I don't want to get, I like keeping my policies where there's a little bit of breathing room. But for the very reason that Lauren has mentioned, I wanted it to be very clear on who is holding the microphone and what they can say when they're holding it.
Well, I think you did a great job with that and I really appreciated it when I read it. Richard, do you have something?
I had a question, hopefully a redundant question, I assume, based on your processes. But the, in, on the middle of page five, page six, the employee use, which covers both the personal time and the official times and then the employer monitoring. Now it's past through the HR, lawyers, that's all consistent with.
So at this stage, what we'll do and what we put in here is that, so library policy sits on top of county's county policy. And that's, you'll find that with most departments, the department might have a policy and then that policy sits on the county. And so, um, if we don't cover it, the county policy does. Um, so what is it? This, Sean is a lawyer and usually he tells us, hey, run this through. I want to say when we have the internal and the external, it did run through. Um, so if, if that is still a consideration, usually what we do is we get it to like, we really like it and then we send it over for, is that correct?
Yeah, I think it is. Uh, you know, and that process is, is lucky. Um, and so we, you know, traditionally for us, it's taken quite a few months to get feedback on a policy from council, legal council or the county attorney. Um, and so most of this, if you see anything of, uh, concern, let us know. Because we, that might be something we can bounce off of Sean, we can bounce off of, uh, my attorney quickly. And, um, we'd like to do that ahead of time and jump on it.
I was just wanting to start talking about the personal use of social media and the restrictions there. That's within the purview of library about to do that.
Well, so employer, employers are allowed to set expectations on how their employees can, um, so for instance, um, an employee can have their thoughts, but at no stage can it be, um, like they can't, they can't wear a, a public library T-shirt and then go to a rally. We could, we could ding them on that. We can say, okay, no, because that gives the community perception that we're supporting that and that's not what we're doing. So we are also telling them that, you know, they have, um, free speech, but they have responsibility with that free speech. So if it goes to the point where it's causing ethic issues or public relations issues with us, we have rights to reprimand them. Just as if they came onto our campus and were inebriated or something like that. So.
And so that, it would even, it would even include, could include, um, you know, situations like they're not wearing the T-shirt, but if they, if they, um, put themselves out as an employee or a representative of the library and engage in whatever.
Something that creates negative press.
And that's, and, you know, and, and it can even be, it can even be broad enough to cover, um, situations where they might talk about something that has gone on in the library that needs to stay internal. I mean, so, you know, if there's a, I don't know, let's say that, that two employees get in, get into a fistfight, which heaven forbid anything like that would happen. They can't, they can't suddenly get on, go onto the social media and say, you know, like Miracle Speaks Out is the one that I would think of most here where people want to air whatever's going on. That's a, that's a giant, no, no, even though the person's not saying, I'm involved with the library or anything. Or it may be, you know, common knowledge throughout the community still can't do that.
Yeah, we, there, there are a handful of departments, county departments and agencies that have their own policies on top the educators, the sheriff's office, et cetera. And so I think this one is really trimmed down. I, I think it's very fair. When I read through it, it was very obvious of what you guys wanted them to do or not do. But let's add some information if, if you see anything that fits. And, you know, my big question about that, Angenee, is like when they, when there is a new hire or how do you guys, is this part of personnel manual, like how are they aware of that?
So when we're onboarding a new hire, they are given both the BCPL employee handbook as well as the county employee handbook. And they are given time to read those and then they are followed up with saying, did you have any questions? And so, and then I believe.
They sign?
I think they sign something saying that they know it's their responsibility that, to know the content of it. And if they have any questions, it's their responsibility to seek clarity.
I hope, let's check and make sure that they have to sign. I bet it's in there, but let's double check. So I think, you know, this, this is our world now. So we have to make sure that it's very clear to the employees. We don't want to put them in a situation. Okay, so we'll take a look. If there's anything, send it on over, bring it to the next meeting and we'll vote on that next time. Let's see, moving on to our next meeting will be October 15th here at 5:30. And then there are some other great meetings and events that you guys are all shared with. Really encourage you guys to come to some of them and see how wonderful the staff is that you're putting on. Just don't come to the Taylor Swift one and take a headset because I think those are going to be. I've already been offered some, some, can you get me a headset, some wagering that.
I will not, I won't be here to next meeting. We're going to do our annual training for public defenders here in the States.
Okay, okay. Is there anything else that anyone would like to share?
Did we change the November meeting? Or did I bring?
I think we did. I think we did.
Did?
We did, was it a week earlier?
I thought it was November.
Right, it's the 12th, I believe, a little bit.
Yeah, I know.
And that's right, because I remember you saying you weren't. Good question. Do it, is there something scheduled for Thursday and Friday here? May have got something wrong. It's going to be, it's not.
There's a foundation meeting at eight o'clock on Friday morning and.
And then there's the trustee training tomorrow, but I don't see. You want to come across all with me?
I, I thought about that, but I have, I have plans. There was a conflict. I was thinking about it.
Next year.
Yeah, certainly next year.
Okay, if there, anyone else?
Liz, I'm going to hand the signed document to Lauren. We have all the signatures. We're good.
Okay, okay. You can give it to me tomorrow. I'll look forward to it.
All right, well, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second and okay, so good.